Minnehaha County Commission Meeting, please stand for the pledge. Again, good morning, and just a reminder to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Carol will be able to help you with that. With that, we'll go to the routine business. Item one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes from April 25th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Bills to be paid of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-seven cents.
Pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's bills include a net of a hundred and eighty thousand to armor correctional health, eighty-four thousand for Fram construction on a bridge, twenty-six thousand dollars to Dell's Fire, and an E-911 transfer of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any other comments about the bills? We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There's no reports, personnel actions. Consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
Good motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve routine personnel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. This morning, I'm asking for you to recognize the following significant employee anniversaries for May 2017, and we have about eight of them. We have Julie Morrison in the State's Attorney's Office celebrating five years of service, Shannon Schultz with the Highway celebrating five years, and Shannon is with us this morning, Stephanie Kruger in the jail, and Cassandra Tompkins in the jail, both celebrating five. Celebrating ten years of service, we have Joseph Schatz in the jail, Travis Daughtry in the Sheriff's Office, Michael Gade at JDC, and Emmanuel Gutierrez at Human Services.
Thank you.
And Emmanuel's here, too.
Thank you for your service. And those of you who are in the jail, we hope you get out. Actually, Shannon, thank you again for your extra efforts with the Highway Department, and we certainly appreciate everybody who has the huge responsibility of working in the jail. That is a significant responsibility, and we want to recognize those people who give the extra efforts. Item C is the volunteers.
We have 275 volunteers for April 2017 in nine years again, or I'm sorry, in nine areas of the county. Continue to be surprised every month that we're so close to 300 people helping us out.
Awesome service. Item six is an application for abatement. Olivia?
Yes, representing the Veterans Tax Exemption for 2016 property taxes. It's RDID 686769 in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents.
Is there any questions? Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Veterans Tax Exemption. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item seven is to authorize the county auditor to publish the architect slash engineer requests for proposals for the Minnehaha County Jail expansion. Any questions? Do you have any comments? Commissioner Bender?
I just would like to thank Kara Muller and thank Tegra for their work on putting together that RFP. I think the whole committee's had an opportunity to look at it and provide feedback, and I think it's going to produce a really good result for us.
Any questions? Thank you for your extra work and time and commitment. Is there a motion to approve the publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the publish of the request for proposals for the jail expansion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item eight is planning and zoning notices. First reading and authorize county auditor to publish a notice of hearing on May 30th at 9:00 to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. Scott Anderson, County Planning Director. This morning, I'm asking you to authorize the auditor publish a hearing notice for a hearing on a rezoning request, 17-2, to take place on May 30th at 9:00 a.m. here in this location. The application is to rezone approximately three and a half acres from A1 agriculture to rural residential. The property is located about one and a half miles east of Renner on 258th Street, and it has gone to the Planning Commission a week ago Monday on the 24th of April. Planning Commission recommended denial of the request. The minutes were included for your review, but today's the first reading and then asking you to authorize the hearing notice to be published. And Mr. Corey will be here on the May 30th to discuss his rezoning application, his request, so I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
So you want to have any questions for Scott? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the notice of hearing. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the notice of hearing on May 30th for the 1990 revised zoning ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Item nine is, there are no petitions for compromise. Now we're to the point of an opportunity for public comment for any items that are not on the agenda. We'd like to hear about those. Any items not on the agenda? Nobody's moving, so we'll go to the regular business. Item 10 is to consider a motion to issue a proclamation recognizing May 7th through the 13th as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week in honor of the Minnehaha County staff from the jail, Work Release Center, and Juvenile Detention Center. Jeff Gromer and Jamie.
Jeff and Jamie are both with us today, and we appreciate the work that they've done. Maybe they can just stand up and represent some of their... Do you have some of your staff along with you today?
We do. I have...
Do you want to come to the mic, Jamie, so we can hear and record?
Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. I have Steve Ryder with me. He's one of my corrections officer supervisors. And I have Jeffrey Lemare, who's one of our juvenile case workers. And between the two of them, they have a little over 60 years of experience serving the families of our community, so...
Wow. That's unbelievable. Tremendous service. Commissioner Gromer.
Jeff Gromer, warden over at the jail. I do not have any jail staff here today. Unfortunately, we're short-staffed today, and they can't make it. We actually have five of them on overtime today to cover the shift posts, so they're very hard at work this morning.
That's awesome. And Michelle, obviously you weren't mentioned in this, but you should have been, and thank you for all your service and the sheriff. Huge responsibilities. Carol, do you have anything to say? Are you going to read the proclamation?
I can.
Please.
Go through and read that today. May 7th through May 13th, next week, or coming up in this next few days, is National Correction Officers and Employees Week. And we are in gratitude to the dedicated service correctional officers and employees from the jail, Work Release Center, and Juvenile Detention Center, provided to the residents of Minnehaha County. Yes, the proclamation. Whereas, Minnehaha County is committed to public safety through professional service, correctional officers and employees are some of the most resourceful, committed, patient, and persistent professionals essential in the day-to-day operations in our jail, Work Release Center, and Juvenile Detention Center. And whereas, correctional officers and employees have a tremendous responsibility and are often overlooked or underappreciated and frequently scrutinized, they continue to perform their duties honorably, with great pride, and with a deep understanding of the challenges within the profession, yet they continue to excel under the most difficult of circumstances. And whereas, correctional officers and employees are trained professionals dedicated to maintaining safe correctional facilities and are responsible for the custody, care, and rehabilitation of thousands of offenders every year, they serve admirably in many different capacities, including jail administrators, wardens, supervisors, correctional system operators, administration. And whereas, correctional officers and employees who currently serve in corrections, those who have served and those who have been injured and lost in pursuit of this most honorable profession deserve recognition for their service and should be commended by leaders in the profession, the public, and our elected officials for their tremendous and exceptional performance of duties. Now therefore be it resolved, the Minnehaha County Commission do hereby proclaim May 7th through May 13th, 2017, as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week and encourages all members and citizens to recognize the growing need for services and dedicated personnel within the jail, Work Release Center, and Juvenile Detention Center.
Thank you. Anyone have any comments they'd like to make?
I just would like to thank all the correctional officers as part of the most eye-opening part of serving on the Commission has been learning more about our correctional system and the hard work that all of those dedicated folks do, and so I just want to thank all of them.
Any other comments?
Just echo what Commissioner Bender said. There's no way that we, as five commissioners, can know all the people that staff those departments, and it is greatly appreciated what they do.
That, without question, is one of the more difficult jobs that I think that any of us have observed in our experiences. As my dad used to say, nothing good happens after midnight, and these individuals generally are responsible for all of those persons. And I really do appreciate the fact that they're dedicated, and when you see people with 60 years of experience, that's a tremendous commitment. And frankly, even with some of the negative press that we see nowadays, we think we have one of the best systems and the best group of people with the Midwestern ethic that we all appreciate. So thank you for your leadership, but thank you for all the day-to-day activities, too. So thank you. I think the proclamation says it all. Item number 11...
Do we have to have a motion?
Oh, we have to have a motion for that, I'm sorry.
Make a motion.
And I would second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to recognize the jail, Work Release Center, and Juvenile Detention Center employees and officers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item number 11 is a public hearing to continue to consider the adoption of ordinance MC-50-17 to provide notice to downstream landowners of drainage projects and to provide for reporting drainage projects in the Minnehaha County. This was deferred from last week. Scott, do you have any other comments?
No. Once again, Scott Anderson, Planning Department. I will just give a brief recap of this public hearing. It was a hearing that was advertised in the papers for last week. At your last week's meeting, you continued this for one week until you had a full commission to consider the, all of your options. And we, I worked closely with the State's Attorney's Office, Sarah Show, when she was here to draft this ordinance. It addresses basically notification of downstream property owners and a requirement that work that is done, be, that information be submitted to the county planning department so a record could be kept. At last week's meeting, I indicated that as the person or the professional person that would be handling the ordinance, my request and my thoughts were that we not adopt any ordinance. We have repealed our old drainage ordinance. My preference would be that we allow basically the free marketplace to deal with this, and I have had a chance to talk to some of the county commissioners, and I strongly feel that if there is an issue down the road, let's say there's a huge outcry from the public that things are not going the way that they thought they should with drainage, we always can bring back an ordinance. You could reactivate a drainage committee to look at the, adopting some kind of a new ordinance, but that's certainly one option. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. I did provide you a copy of the ordinance. It's relatively short, it's a couple pages, explains what needs to be done and when you need to submit the information.
Thank you, Scott. Couple of the commissioners weren't able to be here last week, and if you have additional questions for Scott, I am, hopefully you've had a chance to look at the video and the conversations. Do you have questions for Scott, or if anyone else has questions or comments? This is a public meeting, so we definitely would like to hear from anybody who would like to add anything or clarify anything. Fortunately or unfortunately, I don't want to duplicate the conversations that we had last week unless it's necessary. Does anybody in the audience want to make any comments? We'd be happy to hear from anyone again if you have new ideas. And remember, you said if you were here three times, you were going to bring candy bars or something?
No, you were.
Oh, that's right.
Chet Hofer, 26662, 465th Avenue, Hartford, South Dakota. I do understand that Drainage Board is done away with, but this ordinance is a joke. The half-mile downstream notification is not even close to what it needs to be. And as far as policing, there is no policing. The intent is that you can get a permit prior to the actual work, 30 days prior, or I guess if you fail to get the permit, you can always go in after you did the work and ask for forgiveness instead of permission. There's no timeline or anything like this. The fees apparently are not large enough. A hundred dollars, if you've not done things correctly, is not near enough. So I think that ordinance needs to be totally rewritten. If you're not going to have a drainage board, you need an ordinance that does control what is to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hofer. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hofer?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hofer, I happen to agree with you to a great extent, and you know, I regret somewhat that we repealed our old ordinance. And you know, our old ordinance required notification unless it got to a named stream. So if you were dropping it into the Big Sioux River, say, up by Baltic, then you didn't need to notify everyone all the way down to Mississippi River or something. But would you find that to be a positive aspect if you delivered it, the water to a named creek, split rock, whatever?
Certainly a lot better than what is written at this point.
Okay, and we kind of threw that out with repealing our old ordinance. Thank you. Wanted your opinion.
Other questions for Mr. Hofer or for Scott, or comments? Anyone else? I don't think there's any other questions right now. Anyone else want to speak to the ordinance? Anyone else? Pro or con? Any comments from the Commission? Commissioner Karski?
Start with a quote attributed to Mark Twain. Whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting over. And as long as politics are involved instead of the free market and the control of water, we're going to have issues. I agree with Mr. Hofer, and I've met with him, and I've had a chance to do quite a bit of reading on the new ordinance, and I do agree, there are a lot of problematic areas in there, and it's not a perfect ordinance, and it probably is going to take some work. But I'm also of the opinion that when you have a, as a landowner, you own property and you are attributed certain rights, and one of those is to control those things on your land, within reason, of course. So I am going to go on record as saying that I, until we can come up with a better way to control this, and it's, this battle's been going on for hundreds of years, I look forward to the day that, you know, we can come up with a perfect law, but, or a perfect ordinance for doing this. I'm going to go on record as saying I'm going to vote against having any sort of draining ordinance at all at this time.
Commissioner Bender?
And I also wasn't here last week, but did have an opportunity to review the meeting from last week and listen to the testimony that was provided, and have had an opportunity to visit with some people about this. To be honest, I think that we repealed the drainage ordinance because we didn't think we were providing value. I think we've got some significant impediments in place upon the county by state law that when we do try to control things, then we become on the hook and suddenly get drug-along in any fight, and it's not just a situation where we're trying to help people work it out. We get embroiled in the controversy, and that's not really helping anybody, and I don't think it's a good use of taxpayer dollars. I think the state has a system in place, which is imperfect as are all governmental systems, but there is a system in place. There is now a mediation process, and I don't see that it makes any sense for us to be involved in this right now. I agree with Commissioner Karski. If it does make sense, we haven't figured out how to make it make sense yet, and so I also will not be voting in favor of any ordinance at this time.
Commissioner Hybarger?
I also will not be in favor of an ordinance at this point, and a lot of the reasons that have already been stated. We have definitely been through the wringer on trying to support people who've had problems. We haven't had that many people have problems, but when they do, it costs the county a lot of money, which is other people's money, and I don't think it's a good use of our taxpayers' dollars. And I was actually in favor of bringing this forward for probably the last six to eight, maybe a year, to at least have the conversation, so I won't be supporting it either.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
You know, this is a difficult issue for me, because the way I see it, if we take a laissez-faire attitude towards this and let chips fall where they may, the wealthy landowner will always get what they want. If you're downstream and you want to block your upstream neighbor, you have the money, you get to stop it. If you're upstream and you want to dump on your neighbor, you can do it. And the way that it was with our old ordinance, there was an opportunity, not only for discussion and negotiation, but there was also the opportunity for us to spend a couple of dollars to defend our decision. You know, when someone decides to build a fertilizer plant and the neighbor doesn't do it, we spend tens of thousands of dollars defending that decision going forward to, you know, the Supreme Court. And so in that case, we've chosen to do it, and yes, in this case, you know, we are not required to have a drainage ordinance, and many other counties have also ditched them based on the fact that it costs them money. But as we get more and more populated, and especially here in Minnehaha County, where we have more farmers than any other county, I think it's our obligation to try to regulate how we live together and to try to make it so it's as painless as possible. So I'm probably going to vote for this because I do like some notification. I do like the GPS information being given, because I think in 50 years, when they study drainage in Minnehaha County, if they have those records that show where the pipe was placed, it will be to our benefit. But I think that we are walking away from our obligations in this area based on actually a pretty small expenditure overall of county monies.
I'm struggling with this one, and the reason I'm struggling with it is we constantly talk about local control versus state control or federal control or any other responsibilities. I'm not sure that the neighbors always get along like maybe they used to, and frankly, we have legal issues and only about 3% to 5% of the permits that we issue, and generally, yes, we end up in settling some of those, but most of them that we can't settle go to Circuit Court, and then I think a couple of them have tried to go to the Supreme Court, but they've been redacted or whatever. So it's still, to me, I don't know that we can always pick and choose which ones we want to take and which ones we don't want to take for local control. And so I'm, I have to tell you that I'm struggling with this a little bit. I've been on both sides of the issue. I don't think it's about the fees. I don't think it's so much about the timeline or any of those things. The water issue's a big issue. The state does have ordinances or responsibilities if we're going to deny the local control issue, but I'm really having a tough time of trying to decide that that's, passing that responsibility along. If that's the issue, then why doesn't the state regulate the whole thing from beginning to end, and none of the counties are involved in the ordinance or responsibilities? I don't like picking and choosing. That's a problem, and I'm going to have a difficult time voting for that, even if I personally think we threw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, a couple of weeks ago. I think at some point, we're going to end up going back and taking what we had and fixing it or modifying it. So that, I'm struggling with that. Commissioner Barth?
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Chairman, and you know, the idea that you and I can go out and take a look at a drainage situation personally here in Minnehaha County, or the idea that somebody in pure makes a decision based on a satellite photo or something, there's a huge difference there, and that local control, that eyes on the ground. I've been, I've talked to both sides on a number of these issues, and I think they're appreciative that I've visited their property. And I think there is a lot to be said for local control on this kind of an issue. Thank you for those comments.
Other comments?
You know, I'd have to say that typically I am in favor of local control on most issues. I really just, I feel like there's a legislative problem here, the state statutes. I don't think that they have set the system up in a way that allows the counties to be effectively useful and use tax dollars wisely. I mean, I'd be, and I also, you know, I think that if we are going to put something else in place, that we need to do it with a task force where there's people who are knowledgeable about these issues, and we have some time to really hash through an ordinance. But you know, if, we either have control and we take all the responsibility that goes along with that in statute, or we really don't have any control. And I think that's some of the tension of the testimony that we've heard here today is if, if the idea of this ordinance is to have some kind of control, well, we aren't doing that. And so then what is the point? You know, there might be some value to having a record of it, but you know, then it indicates that we're doing something when really we aren't doing anything. And so I'd rather just acknowledge that we aren't going to do anything and not have an ordinance, and if we decide down the road that that was a mistake, then we should set up a task force, you know, work on an ordinance, have it really hashed out before it comes here, and you know, kind of really have thought through what we're doing.
Other comments? Commissioner Hybarger?
You can also call local control that the farmers will control, because they've got to talk to each other if they're going to do this, and they're not going to have us as the mediator, they have a state mediator. So you can put it back on the taxpayer, that they are the local control, and they need to control their area, and that might be a stretch, but I'm in favor of that. You know, if this really is a disaster, we can revisit it.
Commissioner Karski?
I get to profess that my lack of experience is probably keeping me from maybe fully grasping the issue, because I haven't sat in this chair through one of these drainage hearings. I just know that the problems that have occurred and have, that have been created, and I, as I told Mr. Hofer last week, you know, when I'm out driving through the country and I see land being drained... and I, I see land being drain tiled and, you know, tree rows being torn up. And if, on a personal level, it, it really hurts me. Because I, I know what it's doing to wildlife and I know what it's doing to, you know, that natural resource that we have. And then on a, on another level, I look back and I say, well, that landowner bought that land. And yeah, they may have bought it in the condition it was, but they're buying it to, you know, for production purposes, to create a crop, to create an income, to create whatever income they can off the land. And there's a lot of rights that go with that as a property owner. From what I've seen, we've just put ourselves between neighbors trying to act as the, the government's here to help you and we're, we have the answer. And, and that really hasn't happened. And I, I don't see an advantage of us putting ourselves in that situation. I mean, I agree fully with what Commissioner Bender said that to have what we're, what we're looking at today, to put that in place, really, all we're doing is creating a, a fee for people to say what they're gonna do to their land. And then if they forget or they don't know about it because they think the drainage board is gone and then we're looking at fines and whatever, we're, I think we're just being too invasive into people's personal property rights. So I, I think the right thing to do is to let people work it out between themselves.
Well, I would say that that's the problem, is we get the ones that we, that aren't being worked out. Ninety-five percent of them come through the system and they are worked out with maybe little discrepancies or discussions or concerns. But we've been able to avoid the majority of those going to the Supreme Court or the Circuit Court. And is it extra work? Absolutely. Is it extra expensive? Absolutely. Would I rather spend the money in public safety or some other place? Absolutely. But it's still back to the issue of we, we put together a group of people a number of years ago. They came up with what they thought was the best system. Unfortunately, it does have some flaws, there's no question about that, but I can't think of any law that's perfect. And secondly, I'm still back to the issue of the people who really expect the decision makers to be local. And what we, most of us anyhow, I think, preach is that we want to have the ability to make those decisions at a local level rather than sending them off to someplace else. We've kinda thrown the baby out with the bathwater. And I'm, I think at some point, regardless of how this vote goes, and I think I already figured it out, I really think we're gonna end up with this conversation again in the future. And that's gonna be expensive too. So I'm gonna have a difficult time, frankly, voting for this right now. So I just, I don't think we can pick and choose what we wanna send someplace else. And I, I think we've, we've always said that the decision should be made closest, closest to home as possible. It happens at the federal level where the state gets stuck with stuff. We get stuck with stuff at the state level and now we're trying to ship something back in, in a way. So I guess that's why I get paid the big bucks, right?
Other comments, Commissioner Hybarger?
Civil court is local.
It is, but it's also expensive and we're paying for that too. Sometimes disagreement is probably okay. Does anybody have a motion? Any other public comments? Chad, if you'd like to come forward, you're welcome to.
One quick question. What is the difference between this and a hog confinement, other than the odor?
Any response? Good question. Al? We're getting to know everybody by your first name, sorry.
Al Miran, two, nine, two five nine, three five, four hundred and sixty-ninth Avenue, Sioux Falls. And of course, I was on the original task force with the ordinance that you chose to abandon earlier. And I think there was some merit to that, even though it did cause some difficulties and, and some liability on the part of the county. I think if you have a permitting process here, you still will face some of that liability process. And so I'm in favor of at least abandoning any ordinance at this point in time since the previous ordinance was, was abandoned. This last week, I had the opportunity to meet with a few other people. And two people were talking about drainage problems. One happened to be a county commissioner in another county. And he said, made the statement that Minnehaw County had the model ordinance. And I said, well, not anymore. So he was surprised that we had removed that. And I think down the road, there will be certainly some problems and concerns. But we have to keep in mind, first of all, that the federal government does regulate this to some extent. We're not allowed to drain wetlands. We have to have a wetland determination on our property in order to do drainage work and not drain the official wetlands. So I think we have some national control there. And then the other thing, the other comment that I would make is on the state level, obviously, water doesn't stop at county lines. And there is a move afoot on the state level to establish drainage districts and that sort of thing. And that was to be done on a, on a trial basis up in the northeastern part of South Dakota. That hasn't happened at this point in time, but there is that movement afoot to establish drainage districts that might involve something other than a, a county line. Because water doesn't stop at township lines or county lines. So at this point in time, since the previous ordinance was abandoned, I'm not in favor of, of adopting this one. Thank you.
I can answer your question of the CAFO versus tiling. A confined animal operation is a land use. Tiling is an improvement, like you would, a fence is an improvement, it's not a land use. A driveway is an improvement, not a land use. But a CAFO is a land use, which is regulated under the zoning ordinance.
I think I could argue that the land use discussion could be applied to a drainage issue to, if a farmer's expanding their land of productivity. But go ahead, you have to identify yourself, please.
I'm Statero, sixty-two hundred North Cliff. Every year, our sportsman club has a legislative meeting. Every year, I bring up water. Water is the most important commodity. Without water, we have nothing, absolutely nothing, but a desert. We have to manage it. Somebody has to take the bull by the horns pretty soon to do that. The state don't wanna do it because they say, well, we're in agriculture. Well, nobody likes regulations. I don't like them either, but we have to live by them. And if we don't do something, we're gonna end up with a desert. Because when it gets downstream, it's gone, you'll never get it back. I don't care how you look at it. There ain't a big enough pump down there to pump enough water back. So my feeling is, take care of your water. You're gonna need it. So somebody's gonna have to take the bull by the horns sometime or other and do something. And if it starts here, that's a good start. Because the state don't want nothing to do with it, I've already told you that. They just pass it off every year. So I've, I've seen wet and I've seen dry. I've been around a little while. So we always took care of our water when I was a kid. Tried to save what we could. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Statero? We're back to a motion? If there's no other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask for a roll call, but I would make one further comment, which is, at least we have the federal government looking out for us.
Commissioner Hybarger?
We, so I'm just looking at what a motion would be. Because if we don't adopt this and we don't have any motion, then it just dies, correct?
That's correct.
So we don't need a motion if we're not gonna put this in.
That's correct. Is there a motion? Last time, is there a motion? The adoption of the ordinance dies for the lack of a motion. Commissioner Hybarger?
Just a question of clarification, that motion died and so that doesn't go forward. And the other one is repealed May thirtieth, May thirtieth. So until May thirtieth, our current ordinance is in effect, until May thirtieth.
Okay. Item number twelve is to consider a motion to authorize the chair, auditor, and the emergency director to enter into a consultant contract between the Minnehaw County Emergency Management and the State of South Dakota Department of Health for professional services. Lynn DeYoung, good morning Lynn.
Good morning Commissioners, Lynn DeYoung, Emergency Management. So basically, this is a ten thousand dollar grant from the State of South Dakota to Minnehaw County to be used for training, which is in Florida for the Florida Emergency Morgue Operations Response System. There's a group of us that Dr. Snell has gotten together that would work with him in the event of a large-scale incident within the county or even the region, State of South Dakota, that includes fatality management needs. So the grant will pay for a representative from the sheriff's office, my office, South Dakota Department of Health, South Dakota Homeland Security, the coroner's office, the Sioux Falls Police Department, and the Sioux Falls Health Department to travel to Florida in May twenty-second through the twenty-sixth to be part of the Florida exercise. Within the packet, you should have the schedule of events and then some of the things that we might be doing. So I need the commission to authorize those signatures so that we can pay for the event with a grant from the South Dakota Department of Health.
Thank you Lynn. Does anyone have any questions for Lynn?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to authorize you, the auditor, and the emergency manager director to enter in this contract.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of the authorization, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen is to consider a motion to authorize the Minnehaw County Weed and Pest Board to enter into an agreement with the South Dakota Weed and Pest Control Commission to receive a weed and pest fund grant for chemicals and seasonal labor. Ralph Hammer, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Ralph Hammer, weed supervisor. This is a standard contractual contract that the Weed and Pest Commission puts out every year. It's a six thousand dollar grant on this fiscal year, so.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ralph?
Motion to approve the Weed and Pest.
Second.
Agreement.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item fourteen is to authorize the chair to sign an addendum to the agreement with Sodbusters Radio Control Model Airplane Charger seventeen ten, DJ Boothey. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Sorry for being gone last week, I was on vacation and not able to present the item. It sounded like there was some confusion on, on the, on the way that the agreement had been drafted or the, the attached exhibit.
I don't think there was confusion. I think there was an addendum brought in to change it at the last minute that wasn't recognized. So, yeah. But you can go on vacation too if you want.
I hadn't had a chance to listen to the audio from last, last week.
That's fine.
Or watch the video. The way that the exhibit was prepared last week is, is acceptable to the highway department. As it's shown in the current exhibit shown on the screen there, it shows about the east half of that southeast quarter as the hatched area. And, and the current exhibit, the way that it's shown, is, is that entire southeast quarter, if that makes sense. And so I think that shows up pretty well on the screen there. That's the way that the current one shows in the agreement. And I think that, that is acceptable. If the commission wishes to change that and amend the agreement, we're, we're okay with that too. I don't think that the, the aviation group has much preference either way. We don't use that portion of the property right now, it's more of a buffer space. And that's why we've continued to allow this group to utilize the area. If you guys have any questions on, on the use of the property or the intended use of the, the club, I can, I can probably answer them now.
Question, Commissioner Hybarger?
I'm just a little confused. Last week, we thought we were approving a section and then we had a gentleman get up and ask for an additional section. So I'm, I'm just wondering, what we passed, did it cover all that he wanted or did it not?
It, it did cover everything that he wanted. I understand he had a, a piece of paper that showed the old area. It didn't show this, the blue shaded area that's right, shown right now. And the actual agreement that was submitted to the commission did. And so he just had an outdated copy.
Just to clarify, so the piece that he brought is not what you're bringing currently?
Right.
Okay. You have any questions, Kirsten?
Yeah, lots, actually. You know, my understanding was, is the other party thought that the single-line diagonal hatched area, for lack of a better way, was the only authorized area. And they asked for that additional, what's now labeled in double-lines drone zone. And I was under the understanding that this addendum kinda limited that use to these two shaded areas and not to the area outside. I wasn't aware that, I guess, Highway was okay with the use of that other unshaded area that's now been shaded on your screen.
I think from a practical standpoint, and sorry to interrupt Kirsten, but from a practical standpoint, that's, the area, the small area that's shown right there is where their runway strip is. But one, once they get up and fly around, they do fly in that airspace.
Sure.
And, and so I think it's probably just most conservative to put that entire area on there just so somebody doesn't end up getting in trouble saying that, oh, we weren't in a certain airspace or out of a certain airspace. And so we've told them in the past, just keep south of, of that property line that runs east-west, that quarter's a property, which is shown right there, if you see that on the screen.
I'm sorry, I'm looking on our Dropbox for our previous meetings exhibits and I don't see this one from last week. I guess now that I know this, I would like to look at the prior one. And I, I'd also wonder if anybody from the club is here.
Yeah.
They were here this morning, but I said that I can take care of the discussion.
Without seeing the prior one, I guess, I was hoping it would be on Dropbox still, but it looks like it's been removed. So, I mean, if they're okay with the un-addendum'd version, I mean, I have no problem passing on this today, but I was under the impression they needed an addendum, so.
Commissioner Hybarger?
I'm just gonna ask for clarification again. So what you brought to us last week was that whole shaded blue area that you just put on there, that was in the, the control thing, whatever you wanna call, that was in there last, that authorization? That whole blue area was in the authorization last week. We just had a map that did not show that whole entire blue area and he wanted to expand it. And so our map was incorrect for what the ordinance said.
Olivia does have the Dropbox.
His map was incorrect.
Okay.
Would you let us know how to get that Dropbox on our screen?
It should be on yours.
It's on, yeah, it should be here, if you go back to February.
The, the previous agreement that we had a few years ago showed the area that's shaded in blue right now. And that's the map. and that's the map that he had in his possession last week.
Okay.
Yep, I'm, I'm looking at it right now. It's on the iPad here and actually it does show the entire shaded areas you represented on the screen. If that's the case and the club is okay with that, I would recommend that you reject the addendum today and just move along, I guess. But I'd really like some clarification on these when we move forward on these, because making sure our other parties have kind of given the same. And I'm not saying it wasn't done here, but, you know, in the future, just making sure their stamp of approval is on it and everybody's on the same page, so, thank you.
And again, it's probably my fault. I was on vacation and wasn't able to chime in on the discussion and, and Sandy was kind of shooting from her hip, so I apologize for that.
Any comments or questions?
I'm confused as to what we're doing, so which, are you suggesting that we approve the, the contract that was presented last week? That's not actually presented?
We already did approve that contract.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Was our action last week, which apparently shows the entire shaded area. When the club interjected themselves in here, it was my understanding there was an additional area beyond that exhibit that they wanted, so that's where the confusion came in. I just recommend that you reject the addendum today and let the original agreement approved on April twenty-fifth stand.
So we don't really need to do anything today? There's no action needed?
Nope. So if there's no.
No motion?
We don't need a motion.
No, uh, action contemplated, just move along, I guess.
So do you want to talk to the gentleman to make sure he understands, even if we told him not to show, he got what he's looking for?
Yeah, and they were here this morning. I spoke with him this morning. He's, he's the new president this year and so he wasn't aware of the changes. And so, we, we took care of it this morning.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's no motion. This also flies out, literally. Item fifteen, consider a motion to declare the Midway Bathroom located at WH Lion Fairground as surplus and authorize the disposal method of demolition and removal. I'm not even going to comment about that.
Good morning Commissioners, Carol Mueller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Yes, this lovely building that's on your screen right now has commonly been known as the Midway Bathroom. Am I correct on that? Scott, and that was replaced this past year by a new comfort station, which, for those who are watching or listening, it is located to the north of the grandstand, a beautiful new building that will be available this summer for everybody and they're excited about that to happen. So this building is obsolete and no longer used and I think Scott would say needs to go away. So that is the request in front of you, is to declare that as surplus for destruction. Scott has indicated that the Fair Board will take care of the removal of that. They've got some great volunteers and people who donate and are supporters of the fair who'll make that work and they are excited about having that spot available during the fair for additional gatherings and opportunities. And we'll see it as grass next year.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions for Carol? Any questions for Carol?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the.
Can we hold prisoners there?
Unusual punishment, I'm guessing. To declare the Midway Bathroom surplus and authorize a disposal and demolition and removal at no cost. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
I would just say, a comment to thank the Fair Board and the fair friends for coming in with a no-cost project. That's pretty cool.
I was kind of hoping they'd get a bid to buy it.
And move it on.
Outdoor.
Oh, I haven't been here too long already this morning. Item sixteen, consider a motion to accept the termination of the East River Legal Services Contract, effective April twenty-fifth. Carol?
Good morning Carol Mueller. Yes, in front of you today is the agreement to end early, which was a couple months early, the agreement between East River Legal Services. Last year, we put in place an opportunity for us to, to give this a try and explore opportunities and options that exist on there. East River Legal Services was specifically taking on the, what we call the A and N cases, short for abuse and neglect cases. Many times in abuse and neglect cases, because they involve children, you often have three or more parties involved in, in an A and N case. You've got a mom, a dad, or a second person. You know, you've got two adults quite often and a child involved. So with that, we did some work this past year on doing that. We've come to the recognition that we're going to end that contract earlier and with that, we put that forward for your proposal, for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Carol? Is there a motion to accept the termination from East River Legal Services?
That's my motion. Second.
A motion and a second. Any other questions? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item seventeen is Commissioner Lay's on Reports. Are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Scott has an item he'd like to report on from planning. It has nothing to do with other things we've talked about lately, but we've made some progress on another front.
I wanted to, once again, Scott Anderson County Planning Department, and I wanted to give you a quick report that I have. Over the past four to six months, we have worked with the City of Crooks and Carol has sat in a couple of those meetings and in regard to their joint plating jurisdiction that they have enacted. And I wanted to give you a quick update here on, a little bit. That's good. Yeah, that's good. So they have adopted, as of about ten days ago, a new plating jurisdiction, which is shown on, on the map. And it's purple on the map, but it looks sort of black on the screen. But it generally will show you the boundaries of the Crooks' new plating jurisdiction. They were able to meet with the city of Sioux Falls. They came up with something that is equidistant. So if you sort of see that, those jagged lines meet, that's, there's an equidistant area between the two jurisdictions that it will still be under county control. At some day, I, I would encourage the city of Sioux Falls and Crooks to hammer out a actual joint area that, you know, potentially as the city of Sioux Falls grows, you can see that the joint area still is out, or the city of Sioux Falls is outside of that plating jurisdiction and we will be looking at the, amending our, our zoning ordinance in May and that'll come before you with the city of Sioux Falls in June. But this is the new joint plating jurisdiction that we now share with Crooks. And if you recall before, it was a large semi-circle sweeping thing and they've revised it to follow some county highways and some section lines, which makes it much easier for me and Julie Risti and the Registered Deeds to know what is actually being platted. I've shared this with Julie Risti. We'll be in the process of updating our maps. This is already on the website. Just sort of a report. And, you know, you can sort of see, there's Hartford's jurisdiction. Brandon's is a little bit bigger, but, you know, Brandon is larger, so I would be glad to answer any questions that you have, but just a quick report.
Thank you Scott. Questions for Scott? Commissioner Barth?
Chairman, I, I just think this is excellent progress. I mean, it was a little bit disconcerting when Crooks originally came out with this half-moon circle around their area. And it really is great that the city of Crooks, the city of Sioux Falls, and Scott have been able to resolve this to, I think, everyone's satisfaction.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Karski?
I too am glad to see that common sense prevailed when we looked at that, so it's, I'm happy to see this also. The only thing I don't quite understand is how with that Foundation Park annexation to the city of Sioux Falls, how that falls out of their planning or plating jurisdiction.
Uh, well, I think they just jumped ahead of a little bit, but we will be addressing that. That annexation will fall within their jurisdiction in about two months because we are in the process of revising our joint zoning ordinance with the city of Sioux Falls. It's on, if you recall, we had the, was it one month or two months ago, we adopted the new, the city's new shapes, Sioux Falls, or whatever their 2045 plan. And part of that plan was a new transition area, which our zoning ordinance is now going to be amended, our joint zoning ordinance, that will now be amended to reflect their, their new growth boundary, which will now include the Foundation Park.
Do municipalities like have an agreement where they're, like between Sioux Falls and Crooks? For this north, that Sioux Falls will annex property in versus Crooks? I mean, how does that work?
Well, it, it, it can function under two ways. They can enter into an agreement where they come to a mutual agreement of what that boundary is. If, if there's not a written agreement adopted, state law then prevails and you have to have, you have to stay equidistant. So that's what you're seeing here, is that equidistant measurement between the two for plating jurisdiction. Zoning is going to be another whole issue where they're going to have, well, we will have a growth boundary and a transition area, which will include that Foundation Park. But this is in regard to plating.
Okay. Commissioner Heiburger?
So with their boundaries, if we have a farmer in that area around Crooks and they want to do an expansion to a agricultural CAFO or whatever, do, does Crooks come to the table?
Only, not at this time. They, Crooks would, the city of Crooks would only become involved if they were, let's say, plating off a one-acre homestead in that, on that farmstead. Then Crooks would have the ability, or they would be obligated to review that plat to make sure that it meets their requirements as well as our requirements. So there is now, for everyone living in that boxed-in area, they will also be required to meet Crooks' subdivision regulations on how property is platted.
Commissioner?
So everybody with a building eligibility, building eligibility in that square now has to go to Crooks?
When they plat the property, yes.
Other questions? Thank you Scott. Any other Lay's on Reports? Commissioner Heiburger?
I was in Pennington County this last week for a MacArthur Grant and NACO Justice Peer Exchange and I was there Thursday through Friday. I rode out with Magistrate Judge Johnson and also Erin Surska flew in after a meeting that she had out of state and met us there. This was paid for by NACO and the MacArthur Grant and it was a good opportunity. There was probably about thirty to forty people there from across the United States talking about how they're handling criminal justice in their area. Obviously, Pennington County was talking, was leading this and talking about the things that they've done with the MacArthur Grant. One of the things that was kind of interesting that we as Commissioners wouldn't have any control over, but their state's attorney has started a new diversion program for young adults ages eighteen to twenty-two. Right now, they're just focusing on marijuana and petty theft misdemeanor charges. And their state's attorney said it's the prosecutor's job for, to do rehabilitation and that jail should be the last resort in that direction. And they, they've, they're just getting started, so it'll be interesting to see how it goes going forward with their diversion program. They did hire one additional staff after getting it started and that person is housed in the state's attorney's office. The, the person has been charged with a petty theft, a petty theft, has to agree to the program and have to sign on to it. They're initially charged. If they complete the whole program and stay without any criminal charges or, yeah, any criminal charges in the next year, then it's, then they start working through the, to abscunge their, I said that wrong, but to do that, it spuns their records. And some of the reasons they came up for that was that you can't get a college loan if you've been in trouble with the law and have been convicted of, and Kirsten's better than this.
Marijuana.
With marijuana.
Specifically.
Yeah, so if you've got a kid who's already in school and he's got a college loan and now he's in trouble for carrying a small amount of marijuana, he just lost all his college education too. And then they talked about the difficulties with housing and, and jobs. And, and so their, one of their diversions was hooking these kids up with jobs. Obviously, there's a lot of oversight, but it was, it was a very interesting concept. But that's the state's attorney's office and hopefully the state's attorneys across the state will be talking about how this program goes. Just a couple of quick tidbits too. One thing that I wrote down that I thought was rather interesting that is the Pine Ridge murder rate is quadruple the, the capita of homicide rate of Chicago. Does that make sense how I said that? So that just makes you really sad. And they're continuing to work with that and try to work with the tribe and see how they can address those things. But you hear all the time about the murder rate in Chicago, but it's very high on our own Pine Ridge reservation. They are working on their rehab center or their crisis care facility, which would be similar to the idea of a triage center. They house both their detox and their sobering bins in that. And so they're, they're a little bit farther ahead on that, I think, than we are and they are repurposing a building at this point. And then another thing, another point that just kind of came up is they talked about court notification systems and I don't know exactly how we do it, but they said that they use texting and that they found that texting notification is much more effective than email or phone calls. So just a tidbit to pass on. So it was a good conference.
Questions for Commissioner Heiburger or any other Lay's on Reports? Commissioner Karski?
I have to confess, last Monday, I spent the better part of the day in jail in Dade County. But I was with good company with Judge Pecus, so we, we were touring that facility along with Christine Erickson from the city council and Erin Surska from our staff. It's a lot to do with what Commissioner Heiburger was just talking about. We spent about twelve hours in meetings and touring facilities last Monday and a large part of the day on Tuesday doing the same thing, plus meeting after. It's probably about a thirteen or fourteen-hour day of work on Monday, which, not complaining, but it was all very interesting. And when you look at processes and not trying to recreate the wheel, when we can go to those places and take a look at those things, talk to a lot of judges, elected officials, jailers, wardens, watch the process. There's a lot for us to learn there, so just so you know, there, there will be a full report coming in. This will be part of the triage process, so appreciate the opportunity to go there. And I know other people will be touring other facilities around the country, so.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just one more comment on that. Neither of these trips cost the county anything. Commissioner Karski's was a grant opportunity and mine was associated, well, with a grant opportunity, but mine was associated with the fact that I sit on the Justice and Safety NACO Board nationally and that was how I got invited. And so just to know that we're taking advantage of any kind of opportunity we can that's not costing Minnion County, but it's yet advancing our knowledge on how we can make things better here.
That is correct. And, you know, the end goal is to reduce our jail population and, and why and who we incarcerate, you know, the reasons for doing it and, you know, are we putting people in jail that shouldn't be there? Or is there a better way to deal with that section, segment of our population?
Safely and effectively.
Correct, correct. Yesterday, I met with, on a separate report, DJ Boothey, he got a new computer, so he wasn't totally ready, but we did have a lot to talk about. I hope, I hope your computer's working DJ. Couple things, interest to the public. One is the highway north of Hartford, give me the number again? One forty-nine will be done hopefully middle of June and I think most of the people out there will be very excited about that. And then our bridge project that we're doing north of Lyons should be done around the same time, the way I understand it. So, you know, a couple highways opening up that, you know, carry traffic, especially in those areas, and I think those people will be relieved to see it's done and at the same time, be very happy with the end work, so.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Heib, Bender?
I'll make this quick. The homeless advisory board met yesterday and we are, we are working through some organizational issues and are revisiting the original agreements that formed that board. Back in two thousand and six, the city formed it and then the county joined in two thousand and seven. And so we're kind of reworking whether we want bylaws or what kind of organizational structure makes sense, which helps you to really dig into really what the purpose of that organization is and if it's fulfilling that need. So I thought those were really good discussions. Next week, Stacy Tezen will be here. I believe Commissioner Heiburger had talked to her and she'll be reporting on the Sioux Empire Network of Care, so that'll be a good discussion.
Empire Network of Care, so that'll be a good discussion as well.
Thank you. Any others? Any new business? I will just say that I've been contacted about being part of an ad hoc committee with other counties, other cities, in discussing how we can bring joint legislation to the state this year, to the legislative session, and that process will probably need two commissioners on. I obviously, since I was contacted, I will be on that committee, but if anyone else would like to do that, we all have multiple assignments right now, so let me know. That would be good. Any old business?
Commissioner, I still have one little bit of new business, if that's all right.
Oh, absolutely. Sorry.
Sorry, I don't make a normal practice of coming up with new business without an agenda item, but we found out late last Thursday with the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grants, they met, the Transportation Commission met last Thursday, and they awarded seven bridge improvement rehab or replacement grants, seventeen bridge improvement preservation grants, and twenty-nine bridge improvement preliminary engineering grants. And we were successful in receiving one of the preliminary engineering grants, so Minnehaw County will be working with the DOT this coming year to design, do the preliminary engineering design on a bridge over Beaver Creek on Spook Road, right next to where we just replaced one a couple of years ago. So that's good news, and I figured I'd let the commission know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Any old business? If not, would like a motion to go into executive session for personnel and contracts. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into personnel and contracts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes, five zip. We need about five minutes to sign some contracts, so we'll be back in five to six minutes.